Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20 hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting. First on the agenda is a discussion of our master plan. And I talked to Beth and Chris Britton and some invite invitation letters have gone out and you see in your packet, we already have, of course, the first first respondent right there. She was there Kathy, so that's very good. I expected.
Well Kathy's got Kathy's got a rooster to show us someday. She's holding it back on us, but hopefully soon she'll bring it out of the closet.
Probably so we're um. We'll be waiting to see what response we get from that and get the process going. Let's see. Any other input on that? Just an update for us.
You thinking Buck will just assemble a lot of resumes and then pick 10 or 15 or something like that from the set? Is that the way?
Yeah, I I think 11 was our magic number we were gonna shoot for.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Moving on um.
Well, there's Sherman. He just.
Hey Sherman.
Hi guys.
Been a long time Sherman, how you been?
I'm very well, thank you. And you all?
Oh.
So Sherman, I don't know if you heard, but we're gonna hold your your letter until we get a bunch and then we're gonna pick the committee all at once.
Okay.
Actually, isn't his letter to be the alternate? Peter?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Correct.
Yes. Apologies, Sherman.
But we need, we need somebody to resign first. I think that's coming up.
I thought we, I thought we already had that in our hand from the last meeting. There he is right now.
Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I am resigning. I made an announcement at Tuesday's meeting. I will be handing in an official letter resigning. So after our next select board meeting, when they accept the resignation, I think you'd be free. We also noted that I'll be leaving the zoning board of appeals and that we wanted people to volunteer to either position. So they may be looking to see who, if anyone puts their, you know, they're noticing that they're interested. But at least till next Tuesday, it's probably not wise to appoint anybody yet. Just it's great that he's got his letter in and his intentions known. Officially, I haven't resigned.
I believe we send a recommendation, right? And then the select board appoints.
You, you, yeah, the select board appoints, but you know, you, you absolutely can send a recommendation. So it's out there that we're looking for people and my resignation will probably be official as of next Tuesday.
Okay.
Just to let you know, because I'll put it in writing to them.
Okay.
That's it. And, and I think the board of selectmen gets to back you up one spot. I think the board of selectmen gets a spot on the planning as far as the, you know, the, the.
Master plan?
Master plan, yeah. So I, I may discuss it at that meeting and since I'll be there for three years for consistency, I may ask to be on it. But we'll see if the other two want to be on it, whatever.
Okay. So that's all. Trying to get through your meeting. Listening to it.
Good luck.
Oh, my God. It's taken Albany and back and I'm not through yet.
Yeah, we, we didn't get out of there till pretty late. It was a three hour meeting.
Wow.
Yeah. And they'll still slow down a little bit, you know, it'll slow down a little.
Yeah, that was a big issue you had.
Sure.
Okay, we're gonna.
Buck, can you go standing to Kathy before we move on? I don't know if Kathy was on when we said what we're gonna do.
Kathy, you there?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so what's happening? We put out a request for interest in the master plan committee. There'll be 11 members. You know, we did. You know, mentioned to people that it is gonna be quite a commitment. Once we get a group of people together, we'll, we'll find an 11 person board. And then they can start on the master plan. And if anyone's wondering why the planning board is running all this, that is how the state of Massachusetts sets it up where tasked with doing this. Okay? So we'll hold on to your resume until we get more and you'll know when we start choosing a board, okay? Or committee. I guess it's more of a committee.
She's muted. Kathy, you're muted.
I know. We didn't do it.
Yeah, I understand that. I just wanted to get my letter in. I didn't wanna make you think that I wasn't interested, so. All right, thank you.
It was pretty much a given. Matt, you got something?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you know, we have Gordon. Gordon was at our last meeting and he on, on the record resigned and I saw the select board meeting and he, and he said he was gonna resign. Do we have to? Is it necessary to have to wait? To do a recommendation and?
I, I was kinda hoping we were gonna put it in part of our reorganization.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. I don't, I mean. It's gonna be in front of the select board. We could put it in front of the select board last for their agenda on the next meeting, which is until next week and you know, Gordon would probably give an official letter and but I, I don't think Gordon's gonna go back on his resignation from the, from being an alternate. But you know, I ju- I just wanna throw it out there. I mean, if, if you wanna wait, it's not the end of the world.
I don't think I wanna. Peg, did you have something to say?
Uh, yes, um, I think we should wait because Gordon hasn't officially resigned yet and if it's not official, then I mean, I just feel there might be other, nothing against anybody that's applied, but there might be other people that might wanna apply as well and he hasn't officially resigned, so how could we recommend someone to a position? Are we talking about the? Are we talking about the alternate? Are you talking about committee assignment?
You tell me Peg, what are we talking about?
I don't know. I don't know. I ca- I had to just step away.
I'm not sure why, why, you know. Gordon will be resigning. I thought it would, uh, my, my opinion is it would be good if they had in hand a potential recommendation if the seat became available, the vacancy for alternate. I, I really don't. It's been since our last meeting. You don't wanna do that?
I disagree with that. That's my opinion.
Now that you know what we're talking about.
No.
Yeah. Gordon?
I think I did know, Buck. That's beside the point.
Yes, sir. Um, well, one reason I thought you should wait is that officially, I, I mean, you guys, not everybody watches planning board meetings, but more people watch selectmen's meeting. It was just announced Tuesday, so it hasn't even been a week. Now, just thinking by the time you have another meeting, you're gonna have, if anybody's interested, which probably not, probably Sherman's the only one who's gonna wanna be an alternate. But it does, I mean, it's only been out there six days and if they thought about it for two days and put it in the mail, you haven't gotten the mail yet. You know, so I'm just thinking that to give people a chance to respond, I'm sure, you know, probably Sherman watched it or somebody gave him heads up and that's great. I mean, I, I don't know if you will get anybody else who's interested in planning board, but since it's only been really six days since, you know, at the nighttime when we announced it, maybe, maybe being a little more patient wouldn't hurt anything. Unless, unless there's some special permit coming up where you have somebody who's, you know, needs to abstain what would be the harm. That's all my thoughts.
I don't see, we don't have anything coming up for a special permit, so.
Thank you. Although I, I will say, I think Beth thought I already resigned because I don't think I got a notice of this meeting. I was teasing her. But maybe, maybe she did send it. Anyway, that's all.
Freudian slip. Okay. Reorganization of the board. I guess at this moment, I will officially step down as chair. And we can entertain nominees for a new chair for the next year. Does that sound appropriate to everyone?
Yes.
Sure.
Yes, you know, I know in past history, we've done it both ways where we've rotated and we've motioned. I, I, I'm, I'm fine staying where I am. I don't, I don't feel I need to be chair or anything like that. But I just didn't wanna make a motion if somebody wanted to be a chair that hasn't been yet. I'm fine with it as is and I could, I could change, so I, I'll go along with whatever the board wants to do. I, you know, Peter hasn't been chair yet. In the past, I know he's said he's, he likes to kind of work, but I guess what I'm saying is if Peter wanted to be, I would go support that. If Buck, you wanted to stay, I would support that if they, you know. I don't wanna make a motion for somebody because I could go along, you know, with either.
Okay.
I don't think Dave is interested and Dave is our newest member. So I guess I'd ask Peter, do you have interest or?
You know, I, what I said last time, I still feel like, I think I'm interested in moving the process and making sure that we make good decisions, but I don't feel that I need to be chair in order to do that if the chair is open minded and allows an, an agenda to be adjusted by the board members. Really, that's the only thing I, I think I need from a chair and I think Buck's done a great job and I, I also think having a chair who's well known in the community is an advantage and I think Buck has lived here all his life and is well known. So I'm happy to keep on the way we've been if Buck wants to continue to serve.
I'm okay with that. Peg?
Yes. Thank you, Buck. Uh, yes, I would be happy if you continued on, Buck.
Thank you.
I think it's an interesting year and I think it's hard sometimes to get everybody together, so I have no problems if you would like to consider. I think it would be a good thing for the community. Thank you.
All right, I guess.
I'll make, I'll make a, I'll make a motion that Buck Donovan serves another year as chairman.
Second.
Okay, I guess I'll do a, any further discussion? Roll call vote, Dave?
Hi, I'm in favor.
Matt?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Peg?
Hi.
And I guess. Yeah, I'll abstain. I don't think too voting for myself. So we need a vice chair? Matt, aren't you, you currently vice chair?
I have no idea.
I think it was.
I think.
I thought Peter was.
Peter is?
Yeah.
I make a motion that Peter Blom is vice chair for another year.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Dave?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
Peg?
Hi.
Buck Donovan, aye. Peter?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so we have.
Be, be, before we go on, do you, do you want? Would you entertain a motion to, you wanna wait for the appointment of an alternate? I, I never got, I didn't hear an end result to that.
I, I think due to the, the wishes of the alternate leaving.
Okay.
We'll wait till next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Just wanted to clarify that.
All right. Next up, oh my God, we got sign permits everywhere. If anybody saw them. There it is.
Nope, I gotta raise, lower my hand, sorry.
Where'd it go?
Can you do Starbucks?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just getting in here. There it is. Getting the right screen, Peter.
Can I just comment about the, what we have distributed? I have, I have a PDF program called Acrobat that you have to pay for. But the nice thing about it is that you can rotate pages. So you don't have to look at it like this when it's on your screen.
I know.
So I, I have used that just now on my copy. And I'd be, two things really. I'd be happy to display that if you'd like. And the second thing is I think that Beth should be able to get a copy of that so that when we get something like this, you can rotate the pages for us so that we don't have to and then everybody can read the pages from top to bottom instead of from right to left. Beth, you okay with that?
It is. What's weird, it isn't a PDF.
Yeah, so, so to, to, to do anything with a PDF, you have to, you have to have more than just a display.
Yeah.
Software, which the display software is free, but it, but it costs a hundred bucks or something to get the, the professional version, which allows you to rotate the pages.
Yeah.
So if you want, I'll, I, I don't know if I can. Let's see if I can share.
Hey, go ahead, Peter.
Okay. You see it?
Yes, perfect. Helps us.
I'll zoom it out or zoom it in a little bit here. Okay.
They are applying for the directional sign and the Starbucks sign. You go to seven eight B is where CBC is in our bylaws and it, building sign. One sign is allowed for business. Shall be limited to two square feet for each horizontal running foot of the side of the building. So they have 50 feet, so they could theoretically go up to 100 square feet. But I think this sign is a lot smaller than that, right?
Sure looks it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Yeah, directional signs generally aren't required, requiring permits.
Right, I'm thinking about the Starbucks one.
Well, if that's up in the left, yeah, if that's up in the left corner.
Yeah.
On the building, I, I can't see it. It's too small. So I can't even read what it says.
Yeah, that is directional. You're, you're right. I, I, I don't think that one needs a permit.
No, but also why is it up there? Why isn't it down a little lower? It just, it just seems odd, but yeah, I think if it's directional, you might wanna just see if directional signs are limited in height. Or you'd count that as part of their 100 square feet that are allowed and then, then they'd be within their limit. Either way.
Well, but then we'd be getting into, that'd be two signs.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, you don't want them to connect it either because then it would look awful.
Okay, cause I'm, I'm in a Zoom meeting for planning board.
No, so, so look at the drive through, look at the directional sign requirements and see if there's a height limit or if it had to be freestanding because I, I don't think that it's ever been brought up that way, so it could just be a given.
I'm looking general seven, seven F. Directional.
Nine, seven, seven.
Tell Dave to mute.
Oh. Gordon, did you, uh, did you already look this up so you knew what was going on?
What do you, what do you mean by that?
Display area of such shot signs shall not exceed three square feet or extend higher than four feet above ground level.
Now, look at that. Isn't reading a wonderful thing?
Fundamental.
There you go. So I think, I know I'm being a little sarcastic, but, but, um, that's why even though everybody's been on anywhere a long time, it's like you gotta look up every single sign.
Look it up. I, I was, yep, directional. I was gonna let it fly.
Yeah. So you might have to tell them they need to lower it.
Yep. What is the, uh, is that thing three square feet? Oh, not even.
I can't tell from here. There's no dimensions of what I'm showing.
The next, next couple pages there is.
You want me to scroll down?
Yeah, it's, it's six. Six by one and a half.
That's nine square feet.
Yeah, nine, yeah, nine, six and a half. Or one, six and a half, I mean. By six feet.
Okay, so we need to, we need to approve the Starbucks sign and disapprove the drive through sign. Is that right?
Yeah.
Um, may, maybe we should, maybe we should direct them to, uh.
I think so.
The directional sign part of the bylaw so that they.
Could we? I know it'd be risky, but, um, can we? It, yeah, they, it's not presented. Tell them it has to be three square feet and no, no higher than four feet high.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, we can, we can, yeah, give them those instructions so it doesn't hold them up and they can. You know.
I think we can have a motion with that in it if you want.
Yeah.
Want a motion now?
I would.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
You wanna do it, Matt?
Go ahead, Peter. Go ahead.
Let's, let's do them separate, Peter.
Do them separate. Okay, I moved that we approved the Starbucks sign. Or endorse, what do we do? Endorse them?
Endorse.
Endorse, endorse the Starbucks sign.
Second.
I have a question.
Okay, hearing a motion and a second, uh, discussion.
I think, I think Monica Ryan wanted to chip in. I'm not.
Yeah.
That's true. I'll, I'll wait till the board members speak first if you'd like to.
Any board members have comment? Uh, go ahead, Monica.
Thank you. Um, before approving or endorsing a sign for them, I have a concern about the last meeting that you had about their electrical box. I know that's not what you're talking about right now, but I would, you know, I just feel like it's leverage, you know, before you go approving signs, let's make sure everything else that they did on the project has been done correctly. And I know that the large electrical box that they installed at the end of their, you know, the very entrance there and it's blocking the, you know, the view from the next door neighbor. You know, was that ever settled? Were, were they gonna move that behind the fence? I think that's, I thought what they were gonna do is that still the plan?
No, it's not. There, there was a quite a lengthy discussion and there was some compromises involved and that issue has been settled. Yes.
So the compromise is that they don't have to move the electrical box that they installed?
Correct.
I don't understand why we allowed that because they, it wasn't on the original plan. They made a decision without letting you guys know.
The, the complaint, if, if you were here for the last meeting, you would have seen the lengthy discussion of it and the reasoning. And also there was some, uh, the, the business adjacent. We, we reached an agreement where satisfied her, which was our main point.
Okay, if she was satisfied, then, then.
She was satisfied, yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, motion a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of endorsing?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah. Dave? I got that. He said, he mouthed aye. Peter?
I moved that we not endorse the drive through sign.
Hold on, Peter, we're, we're still on endorsing the Starbucks sign.
Oh, I see. You're calling for my roll call. I, I.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Peter, aye. Uh, Peg?
Why?
Matt?
Aye.
Buck Donovan, aye.
Dave, you're, yeah, there you go, Dave. You're not muted now.
You want the second half?
Yes, please.
I moved that we not endorse the drive through sign on the ground that it exceeds the allowable size and the allowable height under section 7.7 of the bylaw.
Wanna give them more than that?
Seven point seven, seven point seven F?
F.
Good, okay.
Yep.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. I'll do a roll call. Dave?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Peg?
Why?
Buck Donovan, aye. Um. And you know, while we're on this Starbucks, Monica, there is more perhaps they're, they're in that agreement that we had with Starbucks and the business owner next door. I believe the building commissioner will not give them an occupancy permit until conditions of that agreement are met. So if you're wondering about leverage, that's leverage.
Okay, thank you very much for that.
Or they'll because of time constraints, they, there might be some, you know, legal binding that they'll do to let them open. Because I know they, they have to remove a tree and to get a tree person this week would be very difficult.
Right, so as long as they set up a, a gate or, yep, okay, have a plan.
Next up, we have Boyd. Here's what's tough. I'm not seeing any dimensions on this on, but I think in the application, there probably is.
Buck, is this on the existing sign or the existing sign is written off for Boyd?
I believe it is. Trying to remember.
We only get one page on this, right?
Yeah.
Is there a, is there an application form that we just don't have in the packet?
Yeah, I'll, I'll go to perm.
I'll stop sharing and you can share.
No, you go, keep that up. I'll, um. I'll, I'll get back quick. Hold on.
Boy, I'm sure. There is a dimension on it. You see, I don't know if you can see my cursor. There's a 46 high, 12 inch base.
There we are.
Or width, huh?
Okay, there, there it is. Yep.
Let me, let me do the math. I'll tell you how many square feet it is in just a minute. Thirty-three square feet. Thirty-three point two.
Oh, boy.
What zone is it?
I believe that's I.
Can't we ask them for more information for react on it?
Um, hold on.
It says in seven.
Sixteen square feet.
Yep, no, keep reading. End of the paragraph. End of the paragraph.
Thirty-two. But.
Yeah.
Um, but it's, uh.
I think that's, I think that's total. No, it's not, wait a minute.
I'm not counting the, I'm not counting the twelve inch base.
Correct.
We got forty-six by one oh four, is it?
Yeah, like thirty-three point two square feet.
Either way, they're over. Um. See, I, I read that last line, Peter, as if you have multiple businesses and you're adding that additional eight square feet. You can only go to thirty-two.
I, I actually read it, I thought that way for, at first, but I think they clarify. They clarify for industrial that the size of a freestanding sign shall not exceed.
Yeah, that's true.
You know, the, the paragraph capital B is, applies in four zones. So the ru, the rule in the other three zones certainly would be sixteen square feet, but.
Yeah, I got it as thirty-two, too.
I would read it as, you know, the, sixteen for those three zones and thirty-two in the I-zone.
I can see that, okay.
Sixteen, sixteen would be kinda small for that down there.
It would be. Are, do we fall into that, though?
I don't understand your question.
Is he, is he within thirty, are they within thirty?
No, he's at thirty-three, thirty-three. Close. Very close.
But it's, isn't it existing, though? It's already there.
Oh, is he re, just repainting it?
Recovering it.
Well, we don't, how do we know that? Just because you guys know the area?
Well, I'm trying, I'm trying to think about it, I'm not sure either, I guess we would need to verify that.
What, what are the measurements there?
Forty-six, forty-six by one oh four.
Oh. Yeah, one oh four.
Did you get thirty, did you get thirty-three, is just like I did? So, we could approve this. Beth?
If you look at the top of the sign, uh, right above Boyd, there's a ninety-six. And then a forty-six, I think the base is one of the twelve.
Yes, Beth, you're right, he's probably right on, then.
Yeah.
Good, good work.
You can speak up anytime, Beth. Please. Oh, there's a ninety-six, geez, I didn't even see that, yeah. Yeah.
Thirty point six, six feet, alright.
Okay, so the sign does fall within criteria.
Can't wait till we get rid of these signs.
No, me neither.
Who wants to make a motion this time?
I'll motion that, uh, we endorse the, uh, Boyd biomedical uh, sign down at, uh, five oh one Pleasant Street.
Okay, let Peg second.
Peg seconds, um, roll call vote, uh, any further discussion, I'm sorry. Uh, Dave?
Hi.
Matt?
I.
Peter?
Hi.
Peg?
Why?
Buck Donovan, I.
Nice work, Beth.
Now brings us to the old subway, I believe. DCBC.
Yeah.
They get two square feet per building, not to exceed forty.
Yeah.
And they're just over twelve square feet.
Motion to endorse the, uh, New England Raps sign in two thirty-six Main Street.
There a second?
I'll second.
Dave seconds, any further discussion? Uh, to endorse, uh, Dave?
Yes, to endorse.
Hi.
Peter?
Bye.
Peg?
Bye.
Buck Donovan, I. Uh, the outlets, yep, okay.
Um, a motion to endorse Rosewood at the, uh, outlets, Lee Premium Outlets.
Uh, the blade sign and the you're gonna specify?
Uh. Yeah, both.
All signs, okay. Peg seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none, Dave?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Peg?
Why?
Buck Donovan, I.
Old Navy?
Let me, let me just turn these around for a minute, okay?
Sure.
Tried to do them all at once?
I tried, but I didn't succeed.
I know, I.
I'll try again.
Oh, there you go, yeah.
What is this, uh? Electric circuit, or what?
Uh, ceiling plan.
Oh, answer ceiling grid.
What do you wanna look at?
How many signs do we got for Old Navy? Got one there, building sign there.
That's a picture of the same thing, I guess.
Yeah. Oh, there it is, we got, that's the back, uh. That's the back sign, I'll motion to endorse Old Navy's, uh. Times at the Lee Premium Outlet. I think they have two.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Hey, four seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Dave?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
Peter?
Bye.
Peg? Peg?
She's gone, put her on mute, she's getting backup.
Yeah, back. There we go.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, just let me know if, uh, you see her come back, um. Buck Donovan, I, so passes, uh, forward up absent, okay? Please note. Next up, uh. Minutes.
Anybody wanna see any part of this? I guess I can stop sharing, cuz at this point, it's, um, upright for everybody, right?
Yeah, but if, if you wanna continue on, I'm okay with that.
Alright, alright.
Within the packet, okay?
I'll move approval of the minutes of April eleventh, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Any discussion? Peg's still gone?
No, she's back. She's on mute, Peg, you're on mute because you're, you went away and your computer's giving us feedback, so you're on mute.
Still on.
There you go.
Well, I'm voting out on the minute sandals, maybe.
Okay.
Hi.
Matt, I, Dave?
Yeah.
Did, did we have a second on that?
I'll second it, Matt.
Okay, I'll do the roll call through again, uh, Dave?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Peg?
Why?
Buck Donovan, I, and Beth, please note that Peg also endorsed the, uh, Old Navy signs, so we're five oh on that endorsement.
Yeah, and then Peg, can you, Peg, can you mute when you're not, uh, talking, where you're getting, giving us fa, feedback from your computer? Perfect, thank you.
I'd just like to say that I continue to appreciate the high level of detail in the minutes, thank you, Beth.
Very good.
And I think it's good for the public to see it all, too, yeah.
Okay, we have, um, April twenty-fifth minutes.
A motion to approve the April twenty-fifth minutes.
What do we just approve?
April eleventh.
Yeah. I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, Dave?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Peg, uh, please unmute and vote. Peg? Getting seasick with that.
She's walking around.
Uh-huh.
Hi.
There we go, Buck Donovan, I.
That's the end, I'm gonna stop sharing.
Okay. So. Um, I have minutes.
Peg, can you mute again?
In a minute, man, I will.
Okay, we're up to any topic that the chair could not unreasonably, or not reasonably anticipate, um. Got an email today from Chris Britton, uh, and he, they're actually, the select board is requesting that each, uh, town board uh, make an appointment during one of their meetings and, um, give kind of a overview of what's going on on the board. So. They're requesting, yes, sir, go ahead.
Yeah, and, and that does not mean the whole board, it's just a representative, because otherwise you'd have to post meetings, and you know. Um, and also, if you watched that, I don't know if it was part of this transmission to you, but also, I'm recommending that, uh, the planning board do a review of the industrial zones throughout the entire town to see if it's still legitimate to keep the, the parcels as industrial given that all the industries moved out of town. And the fact we, um, might not have been able to have a bylaw that said no PCVs, now, I know the feds are overruling, this is not where I'm getting at, but in general, uh, anybody else could come into any industrial land, zoned industrial for industrial purposes and create a transfer station, or, you know, toxic storage, anything like that on that land. And we couldn't stop them based on the Mass General laws. Um, so I think it might be a, a time to look and see if, well, maybe rural business might be more accurate for, because of the uses they're allowed by right. And the fact that once it's rural business, it's not industrial use, and therefore you can have people having transfer and hazardous material storage and all that. When you can do that separately or as part of the master plan, um, but I wanted to bring that to your attention, that was part of our conversation.
Yeah, I, I did get to that part, um, in the meeting, um, what, I've heard mention of doing it like as a, a commercial corridor, a commercial zone.
Um, yeah, that's the rural business zone, otherwise, um, the only thing we have is the OPLI, which the last word is industrial, and that could be construed to allow that. Uh, light industry, you know, might be able to store hazardous materials, and we really need to sort of clamp down. Other than that, you, only other real commercial zone that I can think of is, um, well, you've got OPLI, uh, which is industrial, but you've got the outlet village, and I don't think DCBC is necessarily what you wanna do because of the, the minimum acreage involved. Um, so rural business would take care of like going up to Goose Pond, right now you have some businesses on the left.
Yeah.
They could continue, they would not be, uh, considered to be pre-existing non-conforming, they actually fit right in. Um, there's a lot of I-zones such as Eagle Mill, all the big mills, and they would be sort of pre-existing non-conforming if somebody wanted to fire up an industrial section there for, uh, but they'd still need a special permit to do that, to reestablish.
Right.
Um, it's just something to have a conversation about.
Lane construction, also.
Yes, that's all I, but, and under rural business, their business right now, if they continue excavating and being, you know, uh, mining type operation, that's, that's pre-existing non-conforming, that would be allowed to continue.
And Lee Line would all, would all be.
Yep.
Is also high.
All prigs, well, that you might leave alone, you know, it's not, they don't have that much more room.
You, you said if we have I'd really, i- if we have any industrial in town we're open to that?
Yes, any, any, any property that's zoned industrial based on that, the, you know, the Secretary of State or Attorney General, whoever got back to you and said that by law was null and void because of the Mass General law that, uh, that required towns not after nineteen eighty-four, that you couldn't zone out, uh, transfer station, hazardous waste transfer, that kind of thing, in any land that's zoned for industrial use.
Okay.
So it's just a matter of, well, take a look at the law. And then think about, you may or not wanna do a darn thing about it, but I, I wanted it in front of the planning board to plan. Kinda think where you think we're going and what uses you think we're, are gonna be, you know, in our future.
Yeah, but, um. My thought would be, say, if Onyx or Mead, well, if we put them into a zone that they become pre-existing non-conforming, then everything they do would end up having to come back to us for, with special permit.
Right, and I'm not saying to take every industrial zone and change every one of them. I'm saying, take a look.
Yeah.
And see what you think is appropriate. Now, keeping them industrial along the Route one oh two quarter, and that may actually be totally proper. So you may not wanna suggest changing that I-zone.
Oh.
But the one going up, uh, to Goose Pond on both sides of the road, that may be inappropriate nowadays. And the same with, uh, a lot of the lots that are out on Washington Mountain Road, uh, you know, I, I think you need to look at it piece by piece to see, it's just a review at this point.
Yeah.
See what you think.
Yeah. Alright.
Yeah, not, you know.
Dave's got his hand up.
Yeah.
Gotta thought on this, Dave?
Yeah, I do, uh, I, I really hate to have anybody think we're locking out an industry, industry from coming into town by changing the industrial zones, but is it possible to make it a neutral basis, you know, upon planning board review? So the option's still there for industry, uh, and just about anything, but they have to come for a planning review before the board, before they could do any of that.
Well, you could look to have it be, you know, change it to rural business, but have industrial by special permit or something like that. Possibly, again, this is, I'm just saying, why don't you guys look into it? Uh, see what other towns have done, and see what the process might be, and maybe you wanna leave it. See what other towns have done, and see what the process might be, and maybe you want to leave it to the. Not do it on your own, you may want to leave it to the master plan. But I think there are bigger concerns that we have to watch out for in the very near future. And might be a preemptive type thing. There again, all somebody has to do is come in and file Form A and freeze the zoning for five years or so, and you might be screwed anyway, in the near future. But I'm looking down the road to the town, for the town.
And second, before I remove from me, Gordon, I understand that your meeting, selectmen's meeting, we talked about the Eagle Mill?
Yeah.
Question about the Eagle Mill?
Yeah, I told him, I, I thought you guys wrote to Cohen and you wanted him at today's meeting, so I was kind of surprised to see he wasn't here. I thought that was a great on at the last meeting to invite him, so, yeah, then I guess I'll make a suggestion at the next select board meeting, did he come meet with us?
I agree, he has to meet with somebody.
When you want, Gordon, we, we'll, we'll send it out to him, I mean, I. I'll tell you, I, I have a feel for what's going on, if anyone wants to hear, but.
You can tell and say what you think, but I want to hear it on.
I mean, he's, his money gap is, is high. With building costs going up, is, the gap is large.
Then cut it down and start something on the project, he's broken it into pieces. So let's get going on something he can afford to do, like the housing is my concern. Then get going on the housing, if you have that money from EO HCD, and, you know, and you can cut that aside as far as. You know, funding and whatnot, and if the money's there, then get started on that, even if the main mill sits there.
Okay, so.
Some kind of.
Beth, Beth, why don't, why don't we reach out to him and put him on the agenda for next time if he's available? And what do you guys think if he's not available, I, no, I, I think we want to talk to him, yeah, we want to talk to him.
I, I would think that whether he's available or not, if he's not available, next meeting, let him set a date, but it's gonna be very soon.
Yep, Peter, did you have something?
Yeah, I just, just to follow up on Gordon's request about the industrial, Gordon, I wonder if you could work with Beth to get us a copy of that decision or opinion? That creates the liability in the industrial zone for chemical waste, yeah, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
Even, so even though, I know the big thing was, is the, is the dump, and I kind of figure that that was overruled by federal DEP.
No, that, that was actually, the language of the bylaw that was presented two years ago at the town meeting, or one year ago, whatever it was. It just, it flies in the face of a Mass General law, not, not federal, the fed, that's a whole different ballgame, I'm not going there. I'm just saying that there is a law that's been on, in the book since 1984. That says you can't restrict those kind of things, the transfer or the storage. On any land for industrial use, and, and I'll get the exact language, and I'm paraphrasing, I'll get the exact language, and I will get it to everybody, no problem.
Yeah, we'll look into that.
That's not the same problem as the dump site though, right?
It's a different issue, it's a different issue.
Different law too.
Um, the, I'm just talking about the fact that our bylaws got overturned. Because of a Mass General law where you can't restrict things on industrial land. I'm not going into the federal preemption issues right now, but I'm just talking about this one issue. Is why we need to look at our zoning around town to see, is it right? In fact, we can look at all the zoning, in the Rs, the whatever, RB, you know. What's realistic and the way, and maybe that's why it needs to be part of the master plan, but, you know, while we take an overall big picture on where we think we're headed.
I, my understanding about the dump is that there's a Mass General law, perhaps the same one, perhaps a different one, which. Says that if it's a hazardous waste site, it's not subject to local zoning requirements.
It's pretty much the same, yes, but, but as far as whether the feds can go forward with this. Even though the town is saying no, I'm, I'm not going there in this meeting, that's, that's not what I'm here to talk about, I'm talking about the zoning only, Peter, and you're right, that's. If you just look at the letter that the Attorney General or Secretary of State sent back, I think it's the Attorney General's Municipal Division. She sent back exactly the citation and with the language on it, so Chris, as I think was clerk at the time. He can just forward that to us and then everybody has it.
Okay, okay.
Okay, Peg?
Yes, where are we with Mr. Cohen, are we going, are the selectmen going to invite him, or?
We are.
Are we inviting him, or?
We are inviting him. We are inviting him, he can't make next meeting, give us a date when he can make it.
We may yet have him on support of selectmen, because I think he needs to be in front of the larger public, instead of just who might be watching planning board.
Do you want to do that?
No, I think we both hit him.
Oh, we both want him, because we, we did a lot of work with him.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Did a lot, you know.
You got it, yeah. I think we may have different issues.
Yeah, yeah, I do think.
Different questions.
Right. Right. You all set, Peg?
Okay, no, I just, and I think Gordon, your idea of looking at all the zoning is really great, and the idea that. About the industrial is really good thoughts, thank you.
Okay, Monica, you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to just speak a little further about the invitation to Jeffrey Cohen. I did ask the select board at their last meeting about bringing him before the select board. Because of my disappointment in the lack of progress, and a lot of my neighbors, and I have been talking about it, I live right up the road from it, so. You know, I was down there just the other day, just taking pictures, and on one side of the road, you have. Completely empty houses, the fence, the overgrown weeds, the houses obviously falling into disrepair. And then on the right side of the street, you have all the up-for-sale businesses that the, you know, Mr. Cohen. Did not end up buying, although, you know, he was, had promised him he'd do it. So it just, it's, it's very disturbing, and I'm glad that you're gonna ask him to come before the planning board, and Gordon, I'm glad also that your. The select board will also ask to see him too. And that's just part of the reason why I'm attending tonight's meeting, is to make sure that this does take place. And that, you know, he, if he can come to the next meeting, then he comes, you know, as soon as possible, not, you know, just when it's convenient for him. And, or when he thinks he may have more news, because really, we're looking for a formal update. Of what's holding it up, it's been just in too many years, and, and I'm really upset about it, so, thank you.
Okay. All right, so Gordon's, we're gonna get the. Language that we're looking at from the state for the industrial zone. Yeah, and I, we really need to look at that, so we, you know, Berkshire Stearle also comes to mind. I don't want to have a bylaw that would have restricted them from coming to town, because they seem like they have done pretty well.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not suggesting that we kill all industrial zones, you don't, don't misunderstand what I'm saying. I'm just saying, you can leave the Route 102 corridor the way it is, I'm just saying, let's look at these other little spot zones from years ago, like Mountain Mill.
Yeah, I hear you, Gordon.
That probably is totally unrealistic, that it's gonna be an industry, but let the owner say otherwise, you know, I mean, this is all done under the public scrutiny. But I, I just, I'm just bothered by the fact that, at one point, GE's idea was to have. Some of the industrial property on Forest Street be an additional dump. And if it's not, I mean, I think that we could, it would be more. It would be better argued that that should not happen if we don't have industrial land there, but if we have industrial land there, we kind of lose a lot of our argument. That's all.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And, and the businesses that are up there, RB would probably keep them still by right.
Absolutely, they'd have more rights than they do in the industrial zone.
Yeah, true, that does work, and, yeah, but the, the 102 corridor, we have to keep in mind, say if. You know, if, if. Mead or they sell off the Mead property, another person could come in there. And it'd be industrial, you know.
Absolutely, and, and again, I, I'm not saying to kill that, you could look at it, see if you want to change it, but I'm not suggesting that we. Change every industrial property, I'm saying, look at them all and see if any of them should be changed and what should be kept. That's all. And, and at the same time, you might, you might want to go back and look at DCBC and CBC and say, what the heck is going around the corner got to do with anything? You know, why isn't it all one, it used to be all one B use business district before Aldo came around.
Well, I was just gonna throw that one to you, gee, Gordon, weren't you on the board around that time?
No, I was off of it, I was fighting it, this was Aldo's big deal, so I thought that was ridiculous to split up. You know, and, and actually, if you look into the history of it, and you read all that, you're probably gonna find that it all had to do with drives first.
Gotcha, gotcha, yeah, it is, it is a little bizarre.
Yes, I agree, and why, why are we doing this to ourselves?
Yeah, so now it comes around the corner too.
That you may want to give to the master plan committee to take a look at that issue.
Okay, I think I missed, who was next, Matt or Peter?
Matt.
Matt, okay.
I just want to mention that along with looking at the industrial zones, I, I think we need to look at that 102 corridor. On the RB side, one side we have industrial. And then the other side we have RB, and the setback, like RBs can be right on the road, pretty much, I'm sorry, industrial can be right on the road. And then we've got RB with like a 75-foot setback, and then, then we got that line.
Split zone, right.
Split zone, you know, I think we've got a, we've got Meadow Farm down at the end, that's, that's. You know, commercial, or however you want it, then we've got Rodney Clark's old, it's not him anymore, I don't believe, up there on the hill, that's up there, I mean, we got to protect the yard. 20 or 30 zone there that it's split with, but I think we lose some business along that corridor with that setback. And then that line, so I think, I think we should just look, maybe we should just do a overhaul on our. Right, since we're doing the master plan, maybe we should just look at everything.
On how to deal with split zones, maybe?
That.
Oh, you're good.
Yeah. Yeah, we got to figure something out there, I mean, I think we had a business that wanted to come in down there, and with that setback, it killed them 75 feet.
It did. Peter, what do you have?
Last meeting, I think it was, we talked about inquiring of the Attorney General, when we're gonna have our bylaws allowed to go into effect. I don't know if Beth has anything to report from the AG, or have you checked with them, Beth?
So we had the town clerk reach out, she's who submitted, you know, the 12 forms that we put together, but she just got a broad answer of 90 days. It usually takes about 90 days.
So we're getting, we're coming up on.
Maybe in a month?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're two months now, I think, since the, so I'm just hoping that we can sign permits, that's all.
Yeah. Yeah, bad.
That was, that was done in March, right, March 24th, so you're only a week away.
Yeah.
Was it that, that far back, yeah?
Well, one of them, one of them was March 24th, that was one of the bylaws.
Okay, well, at least 90 days is, we know more than we did before, so thank you.
Okay, any other? Items that we could delve into here, anybody have? Okay, hearing none, I guess we have one more motion? Oh, sorry, stop, Peg? You're up, Peg, you're muted.
Sorry, I'm trying to help you guys out, okay, yeah, the other thing that I brought up different times was the High Street. But, you know, once the street is in one zone, the other side is in another zone, and. We can change the zoning for Benner that we haven't heard from. And we put Railroad Street now in the same zone as High Street. I mean, we do try to accommodate people, but sometimes, when we're doing that, it's not in maybe the best interests of. The people that live in those zones. But anyways, so, it's a thought, it's another thought, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, we have looked at that, that, that one's a tough one, because without creating multiple split zones. I'm not sure how we do that. Changing that line.
No, it's not easy as people think, and I agree with you. But I guess, sometimes I look at the zones, like Gordon was looking at the industrial zones, and I think, gee, they're not really the same, those zones. You know, the things in the zones that are quite different, I mean, Railroad Street, High Street are not the same, and. Yeah, anyways, thank you.
Okay. Okay, and, let's see, I will say, looks like July 14th, our. Special extension with these Zoom meetings is gonna be ending. So, any, any meetings after that, we're gonna have to go. At least a hybrid, which will mean a quorum has to be in-person. And.
Oh, that stinks.
I know, and whoever is the chair or the acting chair has to be an in-person. Member, so. We'll just keep that in mind.
I was at the conservation meeting a week ago. Cool, it was hot in that courtroom.
Okay, good, so, so we know who won't be in person, okay?
No, I'll be there. Unfortunately.
We'll let you wear shorts, Matt, okay?
I may do that.
I mean, you're, you're in shorts till what, October now?
Yeah.
Are you gonna be the next Derek Gentile? Remember him?
Yes.
Did 20 below zero when he had shorts on.
I liked Derek.
He was a good guy. Uh, okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion, good to see you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Night, folks.
Aye.